Start the North Plains Planning Commission regular meeting for June the fourteenth at seven o'clock.
Please get the roll call, or no, excuse me, let's do the, please rest of the.
I'm gonna get the roll call, please.
Thank you. Chair King.
Here.
I'm Chair Levante.
Here.
Commissioner How.
Here.
Commissioner O'Dell.
Here.
Commissioner Van Dahlin.
Here.
Commissioner Menneken.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
And your executive this evening is Councilor Page.
Here.
Thank you. Item number five is public comments. This time is allotted for anyone in the audience who are on Zoom that has any comments to the planning commission of planning commission's business that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone? None? Any on the Zoom?
I don't see any hands raised.
Hands, alright. So, item number six is the approval of the minutes for May tenth. Are there any corrections, changes?
I move to the by committee, murder assessment from May tenth as written.
It's been moved by Commissioner None and Camp with second by Commissioner O'Dell for approval of the May tenth minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, then it's approved. Right, item number seven is a public hearing. This is a quasi judicial public hearing in which we will be making decision either tonight or continuation. This is for City File Design Review twenty-three dash zero five one Spec Warehouse. So could I please get the process for the public hearing?
Thank you, Chair King. The North Plains Planning Commission will conduct a quasi judicial public hearing on City File DR twenty-three dash zero five one Spec Warehouse. The order of business will be as followed. The commission chair will open the public hearing and ask for declarations of conflict of interest, expartee contact, or personal bias. The commission chair will request the staff report. The commissioners may ask questions at any time during the public hearing. Any written correspondence submitted on behalf of the subject application will be orally presented, including the individual's name and address. The applicant will be invited to present oral testimony first. The public will be invited to provide oral and written testimony on the proposed land use permit, first by proponents, then opponents, followed by those individuals who are neutral. Additional staff comments will then be presented. If opposing testimony is presented, the applicant will provide, will be provided an opportunity for rebuttal. Opponents will also be provided an opportunity to speak in regards to the rebuttal. The commission chair will call for commission comments and discussion. The commission chair will close the public hearing or continue the hearing to a specific time and date. If the commission chair closes the public hearing, a decision will then be entered by the planning commission. The decision will be entered into a final findings of fact order, which will then be mailed with a letter detailing the decision to all parties to the proceedings. Appeals of a land use decision must be received by the city reporter within fifteen days following the date the decision is mailed to the parties. All persons testifying shall be deemed parties to the proceeding and must provide their name and full mailing address. Parties will be notified of the decision, continuances, appeals, or other procedural actions required by the code and state law. The City Municipal Code zoning and development standards specify applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to those criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state last land use standards that the person testifying believes applies to the proposed land used action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body and parties to the hearing an opportunity to respond to that issue preclude the appeal to the city council or land use board or to seek damages to the Washington County Circuit Court, County Circuit Court due to a condition of approval.
Thank you. We'll the public hearing at seven oh five for file number DR two-three dash zero five one Spec Warehouse Design Review. Are there any of the commissioners that wish to declare expartee contact, conflict of interest, or bias? Hearing none? Is there anyone in the audience that challenges any of the commissioners to hear this file? Hearing none? Any on the Zoom? No.
Not seen yet, no.
Okay, thank you. Alright, could I please get the staff report summary, agency comments, and any written testimony and staff recommendations with conditions of approval?
Absolutely. You can hear King and both planning commissions. This is Steve Miller, City Planning Manager. Today we're here for file DR twenty-three zero five one, as Lori mentioned, for Stratus Real Estate developers. They're proposing a spec warehouse building. So the request tonight is for a pool of a new two hundred, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine square feet speculative warehouse manufacturing building. Just to give you an idea what that means in terms of speculative, right now there's not a tenant in the building. It's anticipated though that it will be used for warehousing and manufacturing with a split of eighty-two percent warehouse and eighteen percent manufacturing. That provides a little bit of a nuance in terms of staff's review because we don't have a tenant right now. So in evaluating the parking standards for this particular application, we used that split that applicant provided, the eighty-two percent and the eighteen percent. However, staff provided a condition of approval recommending that prior to occupancy of the building, that they come back and just provide us with some additional information on what the final use is and you know, what, what percentage of the building they're using so we can verify that the parking standards are met, but based on a hundred and twenty standard parking spaces and five handicap parking spaces, we believe that it is sufficient. So that's what the term speculative is referring to. So I prepared a staff report and it was available on June twenty-seventh, I mean June seventh. Provided a copy to the applicant as well as anybody else who provided comment on the application. And so that is the staff report that we're working off of tonight. As far as the applicable review criteria is section one fifty-five zero four seven, the design review standards, section one fifty-five, two ninety-five through three hundred for the general industrial zone district. And I will note that I did have a typo in the staff report on this particular issue. I forgot to remove the institutional zone from my staff report that I had repaired previously. So I apologize for that. It is not in that zone. It is in the M two zone. So again, I apologize for that typo. The other section of the code is one fifty-five point six two five through six thirty-seven for public facilities, one fifty-five, six fifty to six fifty-seven for the street standards, and finally, one fifty-five, six seventy to six sixty, six sixty-seven for the off-street parking and loading requirements. So those are the criteria that the project was reviewed against and that's the ones that will be discussed this evening. Regarding public and agency comments, staff note out a public notice to property owners within two hundred and fifty feet of the subject property on April twenty-sixth. As a result of that mailing, it was brought to staff's attention that there probably were people that were in the notice area that did not receive the notice. So staff reached out to the applicant to request a revised mailing list. And we sent out a new notice on May twenty-fourth to the people within two hundred and fifty feet of the subject property. As a result of those two notices, staff received one written comment in the form of an email, and that email was incorporated into the staff report to provide the comments that the neighbor provided. And they primarily focused on Northwest West Union Road and the speeds of Northwest West Union Road and some of the amenities along that road in terms of what could possibly be made or what could be enhanced. Staff provided some feedback to that particular commenter to let them know that Northwest West Union Road is not a city road, it's a county road, and that we rely on the county for any improvements for that road since it is in their jurisdiction. So that's how that was handled. We also provided notice to TDFNR, or I should say Toawalton Valley Fire and Rescue, for those who are not familiar with that acronym, Washington County Department of Land Use and Transportation, and Clean Water Services. Staff did receive comments back from Toawalton Valley Fire and Rescue as well as the Washington County Department of Land Use and Transportation. I received a phone call from CWR Clean Water Services with them indicating that their comments were provided in the form of the service provider letter, which we require as part of the application. As far as Toawalton Valley Fire and Rescue go, they just brought to my attention that they have seen the proposal and they did provide us with some comments through their service provider permit. They, that's what they refer to it as. We still call it a service provider letter. But they did provide some comments and their comments have been incorporated into the staff report as well as into the proposed recommended conditions of approval. Regarding Washington County, they did provide us with some recommended conditions of approval that did get incorporated into the staff report. However, when the staff report was issued on June seventh, the applicant reached out to the county to discuss one of the proposed recommended conditions as it conflicted a little bit with the interest to Southwest or Northwest two hundred and ninety-second Avenue because that street isn't fully built out right now. And so the county provided us with some revised conditions of approval yesterday evening. And so I have provided a copy of those new conditions to the planning commission in rich form, so they now have that. We also have the county, there's Naomi Vogel is on the call today, or is on the virtual attendance here tonight, so questions can be asked of her. But I would just recommend to the planning commission that any recommendation for approval of this project be caveated to the new conditions of approval that were provided by Washington County. And then CWS regarding their SPL letter that was submitted into the record. The applicant originally was going to develop the two lots that make up the twenty acres there over Northwest West Union Road. They submitted an application for that. They withdrew that application and then came back and submitted a new application just for this spec warehouse building, but they kept the CWS SPL letter that addressed the entire twenty acres. And so I think the applicant tonight will want to provide some clarity on some of those recommended conditions from CWS because there is one particular condition from CWS that is for wetland that is not on this property is for the property to the north. So I'll let the applicant address that during their period. The next slide here is to just give you an idea where the property is located. The property is now two separate lots in kind of a square fashion. There used to be two rectangular lots. The applicant performed a lot consolidation and a lot of an adjustment to reconfigure them, and that has all been recorded and accepted. So now we have lots that are more ten acre squares instead of rectangles. And as you can see, it is located along Northwest West Union between Northwest two hundred and eighty-nine and two hundred and ninety-second. Next slide just provides you an aerial view of what they're proposing. So you can see here, this is the lot, the ten acres that they'd like to develop, the proposed building. Now, there's thirteen bays along the east side of the building that will be active for use. There's also thirteen bays on the west side, but at this time they're indicating that those bays will not be needed for the proposed use that's coming in, but they could be available in the future should it expand and become needed. The way they designed the parking lot though is semi trucks will not be able to come in off of two hundred and ninety-second Avenue and get into this area. They put a little pinch point on there that would preclude the navigation of a semi truck into that area right now. So all trucking activity will occur on the east side of the property right now, up at two hundred and eighty-nine. This slide also shows you the proposed landscaping, and it also shows you in the back northwest corner here where the water quality facility will be located per CWS requirements. Going down a little further into the site plan. See if I can move this up a little bit. You can see has a pretty general schematics here. The parking will all be along the south side of the building primarily, the vast majority of it. There is a little bit of parking that's going to be on the north side of the building here, and there's no parking proposed on the west side. And as I'm indicating, this access right here is pinched down. That would be very challenging for a semi truck to get in here and make this maneuver. So until they need to use these bays, this driveway will remain in the smaller dimension until it's needed to be used for trucking. One, one proposal that staff did not accept with this is they wanted to put a easement in here for the water line to be looped between two hundred and eighty-ninth and two hundred and ninety-second along the north side of this project. But due to the location of the water capacity facility and how tight that area is, city staff did not want the line to be looped in this particular area. So we worked with the applicant and asked them to bring it in with the future development of the property to the north and connect it through in this open area here. We'll have plenty of room to access that water line should anything happen to that line. So that was really the only change in this plan that came as a result of the staff comment during the The only, the other thing that's really quite nice with this proposal is the applicant is proposing to not just do the furniture improvements for this particular ten acre property, but they're also proposing as part of this application to do all the furniture improvements along two hundred and eighty-ninth to just wrap all that up, sidewalk at the street trees and extend the other portion of the bulb and do the right of way dedications. They're also going to do that along the site's two hundred and ninety-second frontage. So we are getting some improvements with this project that are above and beyond what would typically be required for it. So that is a really nice feature and it is much appreciated. The other nuance on this particular project is there is a very small strip of land between these two properties and Northwest two hundred and ninety-eighth Avenue, which the city actually, eighty-nine, excuse me, that the city actually owns. We were approached by the applicant before they submitted their applications to see how the city wanted to handle that. We did not want to be a co-applicant on this application, but we did share with them that we would be willing to remove that strip so it's not separating them from the right of way. And we'll probably do that through some type of quick claim type of a deal just to eliminate that, that property. So it's not precluding them. It's kind of a spike strip right now. And it was really put in place to make sure that the city got the accesses and some of the improvements. And since they're proposing the improvements that we want, it's really not necessary. So we will work with the applicant to remove that little strip of land. The next slide is, we'll show you the elevations of the building. So this elevation that you're looking at right now is the southeast corner of the building is the primary entrance that they have proposed for the building. So you can see that they added some nice glazing treatments on that corner of the building, dressed it up a little bit with the awning to help provide some shade and some maybe shelter from some poor weather. And then any future signage would be potentially in this area of, of the building. You can also see some of the landscaping in the parking lot area. The next slide shows you the south side of the building along Northwest West Union. One of the nuances here with this particular strip of land along Northwest West Union is there is existing utility lines in the right of way. And so it was, it was decided that putting street trees up against the street could potentially impact those existing utility lines that are in Northwest West Union. So we did not want to put the street trees where we typically would. So the applicant provided those street trees on their property. So these would be the street trees here. And then they also added additional trees and vegetation behind that. So we appreciate their effort to try and meet the intent of our code by having street trees, but we also agree with them that the existing utilities in the right of way are problematic and that the utilities could negatively impact them. So this is a good alternative. So staff is recommending to the planning commission that they approve the type three design review requests for the two hundred plus thousand square foot spec warehouse building subject to the recommended conditions of approval as well as the conditions of approval that were provided, the updated conditions of approval that were provided by Washington County last night that they supplement was currently in the staff report. And with that, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the staff report, Commissioner Van Dahlin?
I'm just kind of wondering about what Union Road. Even a, or they just gonna put a turn lane in?
Not sure. I, I'm sorry, I can't hear the whole.
Yeah, everybody's speaking into the mics.
On West Union Road, I'm assisting. Are they planning to put a turn lane in or just no turn lane?
Are you talking street?
County. That owns West Union.
I got two people in my ear. If it's for West Union Road, I would defer your question to the county. And Naomi is on the call. So if you would like to ask her that question, I, she's really the one who is the overseer of the county for us, for Northwest West Union and I, you know, not being a city road, I need to defer her.
Hi, this is Naomi Vogel from Washington County. So um, the traffic impact analysis did review for the left turn lane warrants and it does not meet that. So they, there will not be a need for that. Yeah, and that's in the traffic impact analysis. If you, you know, if you need me to go further, basically, I think the, the main issue is that the volumes are are, are low on West Union that it, it doesn't trigger the need for, for the turn lane.
So I'm gonna just suggest that, that Washington County is part of staff that they're making recommendations.
That's correct. They are.
So this is not testimony. This is just comment on, from staff.
That's correct. Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that. Commissioner Van Dahlin, anything else?
Okay.
Commissioner How? Commissioner Miller?
Naomi, is the traffic impact study included for Steve? Is it included in our packet?
It is, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Miller, coming. Commissioner O'Dell, okay. Commissioner, not again? Not right now. Thank you. Commissioner Levante?
I just have a couple of questions for staff. On the half, half street improvements for two eighty-nine, the one foot strip tract A from the partition flat that the city owns in fee title will actually have to be dedicated, not just claimed. It has to be dedicated to the public for and then, so I understand the half and street improvements on two eighty-ninth, but two ninety-second have me a little bit puzzled because there's only the north two hundred feet of this subject property that is adjacent to a public street. Everything else on two ninety-second is privately owned easement.
Anything that they'll be doing will be through the dedication of right of way that they need to make on Northwest two hundred and ninety-second and within the existing right of way that's available on Northwest two hundred and ninety-second. So they can't work outside of what's currently available or what will be dedicated.
But how can they have half street improvements if they're, so you're gonna make the street jog into their property for half street?
Jogging to the property on the west.
On the west side for two ninety-second.
No, there's no right of way there. So it will be a little bit offset until that property at the southwest corner of two hundred and ninety-second redevelops and we can get the right of way dedication from that property and then they will make a half street improvement to help, you know, square that street up in the future. And that's really what the comments were in terms of how the county tweaked their conditions because of that offset.
So the street is currently improved at, or excuse me, currently dedicated at four hundred, forty-one feet on the northern end. So is it a fifty foot street standard for?
Well, when, when the property to the north of this property redevelops, they will make the additional dedications on the sixty feet at the top.
Sixty feet.
And then they're gonna make the dedication along southern ten acres for the west, for the east side of that road.
So they're only gonna dedicate nineteen feet and
Whatever, whatever.
Not full half street improvements.
They can only dedicate, so we look at it from the center line, and then they dedicate the necessary right of way.
They can only dedicate what they own.
That's correct.
Right, so it's gonna be less than half street is what I'm getting at.
It could potentially be not a technical full half street improvement because the right of way is not there, but we don't refer to it as something less than half street. We still call it half street improvement. But they might not be enough right of way to get the complete half street. And then when the property on the southwest corner redevelops, they will dedicate the additional right of way and then they will make the remainder improvement for that street.
Right, I, I guess I was just going to the condition of approval. It makes it sound like you're requesting the applicant to go do full half street, which should include part of the western property. That's why I just, so just for clarification.
And I think the city engineer understands that as well. And I think the applicant understands that as well. And so we're not gonna make a
Report.
Sure.
That's all I have.
The only thing I have is on page forty-one of your forty-three report pages in the conditions of approval. Prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy, item number four, which says clean water services improvement are completed and accepted by the county.
Yes, I, I
That should be
This was, that should be CWS guys. We actually spoke with the client about that or the applicant and we also mentioned that.
Make sure.
Exactly right.
Alright, great. Alright, no other questions? The applicant, come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Evening.
Push the button up and then wait on the
Send the analog slides, which I don't remember the last time I saw them, you know. Old school.
So you do have a copy of the staff report?
Yes, let me introduce myself to the record. I'm Lee Layton, a planner with the McKenzie firm on behalf of the applicant and our the address is in the record. We have received and had an opportunity to review the staff report. And we thank Mr. Miller for all the guidance he's given us in this application and his thorough presentation this evening. So there isn't an awful lot that we need to cover. But we actually did two virtual meetings with the neighbors in the area. And one of the comments we got on the first one was that there were people in the subdivision to the south of Sunset Ridge who did not, who didn't understand why they didn't get a mailed invitation. And we explained that there's a distance perimeter that the city uses specifies for that mailing list. But on the second round, we included all of the addresses in the in road phases of that subdivision and we sent it, we mailed invitations out to a larger group. And we had a second virtual meeting where we discussed our responses in our design plans to the issues we've heard. And we may have some neighbors here this evening. You know, you can't always recognize people in person that you've met on a flat screen only, but what I'd like to do is ask our traffic engineer on the project, Janet Jones, to speak first about our approach to the traffic issue because I think those were among the highest concerns that people have and we've had some questions already this evening. She did the traffic impact analysis and she's prepared to speak to some of those questions.
Good evening. My name is Janet Jones. I'm a registered civil engineer at Marvin, specializing in transportation engineering. Engineering and I prepared the traffic impact study dated November twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two and revised April sixth, twenty-one, twenty-three. I'd like to summarize our track I'd like to summarize our traffic study findings and provide some background on traffic conditions and daily in the vicinity of the proposed development. Um Steve, could you please queue up the uh figure three that has the study area?
Yes.
So Steve's gonna pull up the the study area, uh that's the on figure three of the traffic impact study. The access to the proposed development would be primarily by Northwest two eighty ninth avenue, which is shown here is intersection number three from West Union Road. Lenco Road is to the west and Jackson School Road is to the east, those are intersections four and four separately. Lenco Road, Jackson School Road and West Union Road are all identified truck routes by Washington County. Specifically on West Union Road, lane widths vary between nine and twelve feet with a width between eleven and twelve feet along the proposed development's frontage. Narrow travel lanes typically result in lower operating speeds, thus having a traffic calming effect. This is supported by volume data collected by Washington County in twenty twenty showing most traffic traveling on West Union Road. Between Lenco Road and Jackson School Road traveled at a speed of forty five miles per hour or lower, the posted speed is forty five miles per hour. Existing truck percentages on Lenco Road, Jackson School Road and West Union Road range between four, six and fourteen percent during the AMP hour. Between six and ten percent during the PMP hour. Using truck data recorded by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is what we use uh to prepare our traffic study estimates. We estimate additional four AMP hour and six PMP hour trucks will be added to the proposed development. This is equivalent to approximately five percent of existing AM traffic and two percent of existing PM traffic on West Union Road. And the AM and PMP hour traffic uh is what we're most concerned about when we're talking about improvement and operations. Those are the these hours of the day. In comparison with the additional site traffic, trucks represent only five percent of added AM site traffic and ten percent of added PM site traffic on West Union Road. The additional number of trucks for peak times has been significant in comparison with the existing traffic levels and existing truck volumes. In terms of safety, a total of three crashes have been formally reported within the past five years of the intersection study in our traffic impact study. Two were reported at West Union Road and Lenco Road and one was reported at West Union Road at Jackson School Road. This is equivalent to less than one crash per year and does not compose to crash rates that warrant further investigation. Or specific mitigation for safety. Even assuming other crashes have gone under unreported, the number of crashes would have been significantly increased to warrant further investigation based on available data. In terms of operations, all city area intersections that we looked at, one through four here. I'm sorry?
Oh, you're done with that, sorry?
No, more stories, I'm sorry. All city area intersections uh intersections one through four that are up on the screen right now currently operate at LOSA or LOSB. These operations are projected to be maintained with the proposed development. So in under existing conditions, they are LOSA and LOSB and with the proposed project, they will continue to be LOSA and LOSB. Our traffic impact study concluded no operational, keying or safety impacts warrant any mitigation of the study area intersections. The existing number of trucks, additional trucks and load delays associated with future volumes of the study area intersections. We define no operational or safety division based with the proposed development. Not only is the proposed development not anticipated to negatively impact the public roadway system. But there will be improvements to the public roadway network with development of the site, both physical improvements and fee contributions to local and regional development goals for project funding. The proposed development will reconstruct the northeast corner at Northwest twenty second Avenue and the northwest corner at twenty nine Avenue. To better facilitate turns at these locations. Which thereby improve safety ahead of any future widening of West Union Road. The proposed development will also dedicate sufficient right of way to facilitate widening of West Union Road along the site's frontage. To the county's standard width. While the widening is not associated to to occur until Washington County secures funding for the roadway widening. The proposed development will be constructing sidewalks along the site's frontage as a site of the ball. In addition, the proposed development is estimated to contribute over one million dollars in Washington County transportation development tax or TDT fees. And over a hundred point six thousand between the city's system development charter as TDP goal. These funds will contribute to future roadway improvements for both county and city buildings. The widening of West Union is beneficial to all all parties, we understand that, whether it's residents of North Plains or the future tenants or tenants of the site. While the roadway widening may not occur by the time the site is developed, there will be improvements to the development. And approving the project now is preferable to something to defer to improved conditions along West Union Road sooner rather than later. And I did wanna clarify, there was a question about uh left turn lane on the city road. Um in this the county's standard intersection of widening road is for the better left turn lane and uh to travel in the both. Fourteen feet, um that that is not intended to occur in full, so move it out of Washington County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Janet, uh for the record, be late and once again, um. Uh Mr. Steve Miller, if we could get slide number seven up from your show, there's just a couple of things I'd like to. Touch on and then we can rise to the details about the uh condition of approval. So um McKenzie does a lot of industrial design and occasionally we have situations like this. Where we have a uh neighborhood uh just across the street, it's very unusual to be next door, right? Chief by jowl with a shared property line, although we sometimes have to design in that environment. But we have developed some best practices that we think will help uh protect the neighbors from uh the impacts being close to industrial development. Um we go up onto number seven. Because it's very obvious, kind of lets us see the um uh Sunset Ridge neighborhood in the lower left of the image. And then you can see uh the tree planting is landscaping along the what's the north side of West Union Road. And it's only automobile parking, passenger view parking that is along the south edge of the building there. Uh on along West Union Road. And the two southernmost driveways really are designed only to serve that automobile traffic. We will have no driveways on West Union Road, so that helps to keep the flows of traffic uh moving along nicely. Because the turning movements are only at the streets, not at a any intervening driveway. And then after people turn off this uh turn off West Union Road, they'll proceed about a hundred fifty feet or so. And then they'll be able to turn into those auto driveways. And what we're doing then is we're getting the passenger vehicle, we're separating the passenger vehicles from trucks that are accessing the site. Because they'll turn in at the first opportunity. Trucks will proceed up to that center driveway that you can see kind of in the middle of that truck circulation bay. And then they can also potentially use the very north driveway as if it's advantageous. So I think that that center driveway is really the one that's dedicated to the uh truck movements. Now there's, and the other another thing about those dock doors, you can see the projections on the east side of the building, we call those bump outs. For the office areas. And those project out to make them more prominent and visible, but they also help to visually and acoustically. Protect the neighborhood from those truck docks and the movements that happen there because it's mostly happening behind. That office bump out on the top of the building. So this really helps uh reduce any uh perceived a noise uh from the activity of just the docking maneuvers and trucks and so forth. The uh on the west side of the building, there's a similar configuration with a southern driveway that's primarily for. Passenger vehicles and a central driveway in the uh not in the middle of the truck dock different. That is uh designed to do the same function uh for trucks on that side. There's no north driveway up there because that's where our stormwater quality facility is located and it wraps around the whole uh. Actually retention facility and so, but it wraps around the whole sort of northwest corner of the building. Uh now, if you um. Ms. Lavante, you raised some really good questions about the two ninety nine, two ninety second avenue right of way. Um the uh HD Fowler project has done improvements in the north segment where the green light is shining. Um the the curb and gutter and so forth, they're all in place there, but the southern segment is actually on private property that we don't control. But as uh Mr. Miller was pointing out, we can, our my client, property owner and and Philoper. Can dedicate right of way on the east side of the property. And so that's where they will be dedicating right of way all the way down to um West Union Road. And making the appropriate improvements in uh two ninety second avenue for the east side of the roadway. Uh uh now that'll match up with the existing pavement that is there. But we're not relying on two ninety second for the access and circulation needs of this project because it's not public right of way. We expect that in the future it will be and then um this this building and others will all be able to use. The public right of way of uh two ninety second, but at the moment it isn't, we have a plan that's workable without a problem. Let's let me, let's just wrap this up and then we can take questions after that. So uh uh what I'd like to do is uh focus on the conditions of approval. Uh Mr. Miller mentioned that we had um some comments on the CWS related uh conditions of approval. So uh at the bottom of page thirty nine, uh under prior to any work on the site. And then the CWS header, condition resets prior to any activity within the sensitive area. Uh this is a standard boilerplate condition that that permitting from the uh Division of State Lands and US Army Corps of Engineers is necessary. There's no disagreement about that, the only clarification we want to make is that this relates, this CWS comment relates to the the. Initial proposal which included developing the north part of this far west property uh concurrently. The only sensitive area is up in that north part of the property that's not actually part of the application before you. That will be part of the different application will come in later uh for your review and it'll have to go through a public hearing. So that's the only location where there is a sensitive area and we just want to clarify that for the record that there isn't one on this site. Uh similarly, uh condition seven on page forty says activities located within a hundred year flood plain shall comply with. The resolution order of CWS. Um now here again, the only hundred year flood plain is to the norm up close to the railroad tracks at the north end of the other parcel. So just for the record, there's no hundred year flood plain area within this uh subject property. I don't know that it's necessary to do a motion to amend those conditions for our purposes. As long as we all uh understand that those are out of the book conditions, it's just that those things aren't in fact on the subject property. So with that, um we want to thank staff for again for all the guidance that you've given us. Uh I don't want to bore you with all the things I'm very proud of in this design, but we'd much prefer to respond to any questions that you have. And uh take those from you. So welcome your questions if it's fine.
The questions of the applicant, the Commissioner Van Donlen. Commissioner out.
Well, I'm reading that it's saying all the work will be done inside the building.
Uh yes, the building is defined only to have front docking and access for receiving and shipping out. And all work will be done inside the building, there are no outdoor storage or work areas in this project.
Commissioner Miller?
No question.
Commissioner, don't add up.
No questions.
Commissioner, not again?
Um I have a question about your trucks when they're entering and exiting, mainly when they're entering, um. How are you gonna stage that if you have a lot coming in at a time? You have no turn lanes or anything, how do you stage that if you have it overlooked or get backed up?
Well, typically, that's a logistics uh thing, you know, a lot of companies would rather not have trucks. Operating during peak times and that's why the data that we suggest that, you know, truck percentages, while you could have say a hundred trucks per day. You might only have ten trucks during the peak hour or maybe five trucks during the peak hour and they are most often just there throughout like a few four or five days.
Right, um peak or not peak though, what if you have, you know, twenty trucks showing up or twenty five trucks showing up? Because someone got backed up or whatever, well, how do you stage that then?
So this is where um uh we're kind of getting off the road and into the site. Uh it that scenario, while we can envision it, is extremely rare. But the apron with the the depth of that apron, uh where the approach to the dock doors is. Is about seventy feet deep, I believe. That's to provide not only maneuvering for the semis to uh get their trailers into position. But especially with that kind of logistics situation, they'll direct their drivers to not leave their tractor sitting on the trailer. You know, once you're in position, get the heck out of here and that gives them room to, if they do have an unusual number coming in. They can get them into the site in that remaining apron.
I have someone sitting out there on the roadway.
Correct.
Backing up and stuff, that's what I was curious about what what you're staging.
Yeah, no, well, your point is well taken and uh to be clear, the tenant needs to manage this facility. To not rely on the public streets to store trucks, we we understand that and we have, they have the room to do it. Um another factor, I I understand that this tenant is only needing to install some of the truck dock doors. At this time, so there's capacity on each side of the building for I think thirteen dock doors on each side.
That's what my concern is, is when when if this building was to come to full capacity.
Right.
And then you're building something on the on the backside of that property also. You know, what that traffic condition could look like on those grids of the streets on both sides.
Right. The uh yeah, I'm not not disagreeing with you, but the point I'm trying to make is that the reason facilities like this. Like having that many dock doors, they're not going to be full all the time, they need empty dock doors. So as soon as somebody arrives, they can say, go to dock door number eighteen, it's waiting for you. So they need those vacant dock doors um in order to be able to get uh trailers into position and tractors out of the way as soon as quickly as possible. That's what's efficient for them, is what the economics encourage them to do also. So I think we have a design here that keeps those uh incentives aligned correctly to avoid the kind of congestion problem that you're concerned about.
And what if in the future this building becomes something else, what is there for parking and? That also, I mean, because you're taking up, you know.
Yeah.
A lot of the the land there.
Thank you, that reminds me, uh your planning director uh uh mentioned this in the conditions of approval. There's a condition that will require new tenants to demonstrate that their use mix. Whether it's one tenant or multiple tenants in the building, which is possible, that the use mix doesn't exceed that ratio that we've provided. Uh as you base the support meeting, the the minimum parking requirements. So we've done the calc and we put it into the record that if you had more than say eighteen percent manufacturing occupying this building. You get to the point where you're probably gonna have too many people trying to find parking spaces for the site to accommodate. So um is not long that it's appropriate for the city to check that as part of the tenant improvement process. In fact, it's routine, which is why there's no reason for us to object uh to a condition like that, but that's the protection. If somebody came in here and wanted to have a really high end count operation. First of all, they probably wouldn't lease the property because it wouldn't be suitable for their operation and they couldn't get the permit they need from the city. In order to move in, so I think the city has adequate protections and the conditions of approval and the tenant permitting process. To uh avoid that kind of somebody sneaking in and becoming a problem.
Great, I do have a question, that is very similar. With the traffic study done, uh assuming that the other thirteen bay doors on the west side uh would be operable?
So the traffic study done, it's in um accordance with um, you know, same industry standards. Where the using ICP data, this is the Institute of Transportation Engineers data. Um they're a part of data sets, including some data points for similar facilities, so like we uh we just earlier. You know, we assume that there's an eighty percent refactoring and eighty two percent warehousing. In fact, it tends to be more dense and fully dense where warehouse in West Coast. Um and so our rates come from that and I I think it's safe to say that you could assume. And I, I think it's safe to say that you could assume a similar number of dock doors for a facility of that size based on containment and trip data that's available.
I guess I don't know that my answer, I got answered that I was expecting, so.
Let me give you a reminder summary of your.
Twenty six doors, we had more traffic, right? They have more employees, we have more of everything, right? Because, and so I'm wondering if the traffic study was done based on the other thirteen doors on the west side.
The, I think the short answer is yes, because first of all, for a building of two over two hundred thousand square feet, twenty six dock doors is not an unusual number. So this is a very typical building when it comes to those I T statistics that Janet is referring to. And that gives us a very substantial database to, to have comparables to work with. And the analysis is not based on this tenant. The tenant came along after we had gone down the road to do a spec industrial building. So it's based on full occupancy, based on what the statistics tell us, full occupancy would look like.
I guess I still didn't really get an answer. Would you think it was that way? And I guess maybe Naomi could answer that question better to know whether that study was actually done with those doors or without the stores. I travel on that road all the time and without that building, there's lots of big trucks apart in the lane with flashers on all the time. So trucks like to show up and like you were talking about the additional, there's thirteen doors and sixteen trucks out here to work with. And now we have twenty.
Sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry. Are you asking whether the traffic impact analysis considered the scenario that they're proposing? Is that what I'm hearing is the question?
So even though they're only going to use thirteen now, their study should have to do with the design of the building, not with.
Right. I'm, I'm going to have to pull that up to, to, because again, it's, it's been a little bit of time when I took a look at that. So I'll need, but we generally make them analyze what they're proposing for. And so, and so I guess one of the questions I have is are you concerned about the impacts on West Union with regards to trucks backing up and not being able to get on site onto two ninety second?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I missed the last little bit.
Oh, I was just wondering, is, is your concern that, that trucks will be queuing on West Union while they're waiting to get into the bays? Is that what I'm hearing is your concern? I'm not hearing it. Did we lose connection? Yeah? Okay.
So to answer that question, I think I understand the question a little better now. Traffic studies are prepared based on variables for proposed development. That can be based on acreage, that can be based on building area. There is no variable that's available on the state of per bay door. So the data that we have available, we used it on thousands of square feet of building area. And so we have ship rates that are for warehousing and then ship rates are for manufacturing and sales. They, the data that I T have available is based on either acreage or building area. We selected building area as a conservative estimate because on acreage, we looked at numbers based on, actually was the number of employees that was lower, but the conservative estimate gave us these trip numbers. There's no data available to us by bay doors because as we explained, the functionality of bay doors may not necessarily linearly correlate with the number of trucks, right? As we was saying, you know, logistics wise, you could have twenty six bay doors when we do use, or as seen as time is, I don't know, a truck sitting there for some period of time or somebody blowing something. So that's not necessarily how the data works and this is what's available. So this is the industry standard based on building area.
Okay, so Steve, so if they decided to use the other thirteen bay doors, do they not have to come and reassess the use of the building?
Excuse me, yes, we would want to do that.
There's something doesn't seem to be a condition of this though.
I think that could be an ongoing condition. That's not in there right now, but so much to your concern about maybe somebody sneaking in there. I mean, when there's a change in use of the building, they have to come in and go through a review just to bring in new use in, so we can reassess that everything's going to work in terms of if they go and bring on the additional thirteen bay doors, we could get an addendum to their traffic study to kind of address if that is going to trip anything to make it more intense in terms of needing additional turn lanes or any other improvement. But what they're telling us is that the study was done based on what they're proposing and what they're proposing is the thirteen bay doors.
Let's clarify this. This is a speculative industrial building that has been designed from the outset with capacities around the twenty six bay doors that are consistent with its size at over two hundred thousand square feet. When we use Institute for Traffic Engineers data to look at trip generation for buildings of this size, we get trip generation for a fully occupied building. Including all of those dock doors being online. So I, I, I can't over emphasize this. The, it's integral, it's essentially baked in to the traffic study that we've done projections assuming a fully occupied building with twenty six dock doors in operation. That's the starting point for the traffic analysis. It is a bit of a red herring that at the moment, this tenant doesn't need all those doors. And so to save everybody some money, the building is designed with punchouts in the walls to make it easy to install them later. But if you don't need them all right now, you don't have to install them all right now. That's all that's happening. So the, the traffic study is based on a full occupancy capacity of this building with all of those doors online. I want to make that absolutely clear. That's today's, the traffic.
Yeah, I appreciate your clarification. That was my understanding. I thought I heard something about the thirteen, so I, it's been a while since I looked at that document. So thank you for clarifying that.
Anything else? Commissioner Condon?
No.
Commissioner Lavante?
No, Kathy answered the question regarding the public improvements on two ninety second.
All right, no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, is there any proponent, people wishing to testify in favor of hearing none and seeing none?
I did, I just had a question.
Yeah, we need, we need you to.
Well, are you testifying?
I'm not testifying. I just needed a clarification.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Sandy Reeser. I'm a part of Sunset Ridge neighborhood. My address is two nine one three seven Northwest Pennines Streets.
Is your question as a proponent, opponent, or neutral?
Neutral.
Go ahead.
She had mentioned, the gal here had mentioned the traffic analysis and I heard twenty twenty. So I'm just wanting to clarify that the analysis is not, she's not, they're not using a traffic study from twenty twenty since in twenty twenty, the neighborhood wasn't even complete. So traffic has literally doubled from our neighborhood. We've got the school that's open since then and all the housing has been completed. So I just wanted to clarify when the analysis was completed.
Any questions? Thank you. And would be answered in rebuttal. Are there any proponents? Testifying in favor of, any opponent testifying against? Are there any one that's testifying either neutral for or against? Hearing none, is there any on the Zoom?
Not seeing any answers.
Okay, would the applicant please come forward for rebuttal?
Hello, Janet Jones again. I just wanted to answer that question. I noted twenty twenty, that was the date of two counts that were collected by Washington County, just to show that we, but our traffic study was based on recent counts collected in the fall of twenty twenty two. And then to further clarify, we always wrote that just to the future date that the development will be online or extracted fully occupied. So our analysis predicts out to June twenty four.
Thank you very much. Hey, there's no one else wishing to testify? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Who? Global Public Hearing at eight oh one for the file number D R twenty three dash zero five one spec warehouse design review? That will entertain a motion and the motion should include the new Washington County conditions of approval along with the other modification to the condition of approval with Clean Water Services.
I move to approve city file D R twenty three dash zero five one spec warehouse to include amendments of conditions from Clean Water Services, Washington County and assessment, as assessment.
All second. Been moved by Commissioner Lavante, seconded by Commissioner Nunn and Camp for approval of D R twenty three dash zero five one spec warehouse design review with the modifications to conditions all over the favors. Say aye. Those opposed? Any intentions? You have this unanimous sleep. All right. Move on to item number eight is new business. We have any new business in planning committee?
This is coming your way July twelfth in the form of a text amendment from Linafol just for the clear business standards. This was something that you guys discussed at your last meeting and work session. Well, I take that back. I think it was two minutes ago when we had approached with our beer age. Discuss with you the idea about doing that amendment. So as a result of that work session, they have now brought forward a text amendment request to the in the previous standards. In addition to that, we will also add a modification to the architectural pattern book. So we'll have both of those that evening. We'll go with the text amendment first. If the text amendment receives a recommendation of approval from the planning commission, then we could roll over to the modification. This planning commission is not going to propose a recommendation of approval on the text amendment, then it pretty much kills the request on the modification. So it's a little tricky, but that's why we're going to have you review the text amendment first to see what your recommendation is for that. So we can determine how to best handle the modification request. So this is a little tricky. But that's, that's the new businesses of right now.
Anyone else new business? Okay, move on to item nine is unfinished business?
Unfinished business is going to be the sign code again, as we discussed today during the work session. Staff will put together a little bit more detail based on your previous comments for the changes to the to the definitions and then the comments that we received tonight will have that in a fashion for you. So it's very clear on what's recommended as a change and, and what's going to be new. And then staff will provide some additional comments just based on my limited time working with the code and what I've seen around the city in terms of what seems to be working and what's next.
And just to suggest, and we can get that as soon as possible because I want all commissioners to review that and try to come up with some comments. And I think we were talking about also concentrating on monument signs. The face square footage versus height so that we could at least have a good discussion on that.
Yes, absolutely. No, I'm going to give you plenty of time. So please look at the sign code that you have right now. That's current form. And then I will give you that other one with the changes that you recommended. And then I think that will get us up to speed for the next move session.
Okay, any other unfinished business?
Not at the moment.
Okay. So move on to item number ten is the land use applications. The business calendar that's in the end of the back. Any questions, comments on those? Hearing none? Move on to item eleven is planning commission comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Lavante.
So there's been lots of discussion lately with notices in regards to land use. Things going on in the city, whether it be development review or large things like the U G B. And it got me thinking, did a public notice go out for the U G B expansion?
It did.
I only said that because I don't think I got one.
We, we didn't send a public notice. No, no, we didn't.
It wasn't required.
So for legislative, so I think this is part of the problem with the transparency with the public right now is, you know, it, it feels like I had a hard time following the PAC meetings. I never knew when they were going to occur. I would look on a website and I may or may not be able to find where I was looking for. And meetings were changing and because I wasn't part of the group, I didn't know. And so, you know, I just, I'm kind of listening to stuff going on in social media and I'm thinking, wow, you know, maybe, maybe a smaller, a side, a town our size that, you know, has a lot of compassionate community members, maybe we should be going the extra mile on big things like a U G B expansion that brings in eight hundred acres. Maybe allowing more public input. So I, I'm just, I'm just wondering if maybe we should change our mindset on some of that. Because yeah, I, I've been hearing earfuls from people that know that I'm on the planning commission. And then it kind of got me thinking too, and Stuart might remember this, and I don't even know if it's still a thing. The planning commission used to be considered the the outreach or the citizen involvement committee. And so I'm, I'm thinking, I don't even know, has that ever changed up the books? Is that still the thing?
I've never even remembered that. In the seven years I've been here, I've never heard that term.
Do you fulfill that obligation for the city? You are the citizen involvement committee.
Well, so then it gets me thinking, you know, there are some very valid points that were mentioned out on, you know, Facebook and so forth that, you know, the city can announce ten different posts on the ice cream social, but it's something as large and significant to our community as a U G B expansion. There's one post that I found. I couldn't find any others, just one lonely post. And so I don't know if maybe as a planning commission, maybe we should have a representative that is kind of our outreach that is going an extra mile and posting stuff on behalf of the commission, not a personal opinion, but on half of the, behalf of the commission to provide that outreach, initial outreach for folks. So you know, I, I don't know. I, it, it just didn't seem like it was a pretty face that I wanted to be involved with some of the app, you know, backlash that came. The, so moving on from that, the other question I had is one of my neighbors asked me about parking in the streets. And she heard from another neighbor that they weren't allowed to park in front of their home. They happen to have, like most original North Plains, there's no, you know, original North Plains, there's no, you know, there's no curb and sidewalk. It's just gravelled after whatever it may be. And what constitutes you being able to park in front of your own home and 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 why a property owner would be told that they can't. I couldn't find anywhere in the code, so I don't know. I don't, I don't know why one property owner would be told they can't park in front of their home. I couldn't answer that as a planning commissioner and that frustrated me. So I don't know how it came about or what code the city was reviewing. When telling the property owner they can't park in front of their home.
I I think, you know, everything is a case by case scenario, you know, so it doesn't happen, you know, what happens with one lot doesn't always happen with another lot. But I believe the one you're referring to right now is a property that's located at the corner of um, three eleventh and Claxton, um, the person that is across the street from that old church building, um, that's on Claxton. And he has not one vehicle, but probably ten vehicles, but he parks in the street. So that's a little bit different level of parking in front of your house that is also spilled over to parking onto the neighbor's property. And then they also have a bit of a uh, junking. They also have a bit of a
But that's that's a different point though. My point is telling somebody they cannot park in a public right away in front of their home. That's not what you told them at all.
That's not what we told.
Because that's what a different neighbor had told me. And I'm like, I don't know what you're talking about. I've never seen this.
But how do you get the volume of cars and?
But it should be, I should be able to have ten cars. I can park them up and down the street. I can move them. Why? I I don't, does anybody disagree? I mean, I don't, I don't know why the number of vehicles you have should preclude you from parking in an available public parking area.
I understand that you have a different opinion and that's fine. Um, we look.
But it's coming down to the code though.
And we went into our code, we went into our parking code, we went into our nuisance code, we went into our.
But where in our parking code does it say you can't have excessive vehicles?
I'll have to bring that over to you. I'll bring that and copy it over to you.
Because that that's what I would like to see, because I couldn't answer their question. Again, I I'm feeling kind of dumbfounded. I've been on a planning commission for years and I can't answer simple questions from neighbors asking me. I'm just like, I don't know.
Sometimes it's buried in not just as it was not in the zoning ordinance.
Well, and then and then she goes, I'm saying, and we can't even work on our car. And I'm like, what do you mean? I said, you can work on your car in your driveway. Well, no, the neighbor said you can't even work on your car. So then I'm like.
It's it's a case by case scenario.
It's your own property. So so I can work on my car, but my neighbor can't work on your car.
That's incorrect. It was believed that they were operating more as an auto shop. And not that there was an individual vehicle that they were working on. And we met with this particular person. We spoke with them. They brought some things to our attention. Um, we have not done anything to stop him from parking his cars the way he's parking them right now. We have asked him to clean up the backyard because it had turned into a bit of a junkyard.
Right, but that's different. Again, I'm just going by what I I just, the the confusion in the that was brought to me by a different neighbor is hearing side, they they weren't saying anything about the excessive vehicles in their car. Disassembled, whatever. The concerns were that owner was told they couldn't do things. So does that mean I can't do them?
Yes, again, it's a case by case basis.
But then that feels like you're harassing somebody if it's a case by case basis.
We're not.
Okay, we're going to move on from that.
I can, I can tell you that what we're doing is if there's a situation that arises and it gets to a level that is causing other neighbors some concern, we're going to look into it. And that's what happened.
Okay, so then that's why you went to the county and basically basically the city took the stance that they don't want the church there and they shouldn't be there. So therefore now they should be exempt, non exempt.
We didn't take that stance. We uh, were.
You contacted Washington County exemptions department, told them they were not acting as a church and they lost their exemption.
I understand that. You have to take a second.
You know, that's a first for a city to do that.
Asked that that we looked into. So we did.
I just feel your conduct lately has just been, I don't know, it's it's not sitting well with things that are going on. So that's all I have. Thank you, Stuart.
Well, the my comment, assess assess the number of cars. It depends on who's judging the number because everyone, my kid had a car and I don't think that was excessive. You know, so it's more so much if they're being used or if they're sitting there for the period of time. It seems like more the issue and not the number of cars.
It is the number and how they're being used. And once we got in touch with the neighbor and we spoke with them and we learned a little bit more, we we moved on and we started looking into the backyard. So there was multiple issues that we needed to speak with that neighbor about. And that's what we've done. Um, we had a nice conversation. We shared plans afterward. He seemed to understand. He had until August to uh, make some improvements on the backyard to clean it up a little bit. I've walked by. It looks like that's happening. As you probably noticed, all those cars are still parked in the street and on the church property that is unchanged. Uh, we spoke with them about how he's doing automobile work in his property. He verified to us that he's not doing it for um, commercial purposes, that uh, he actually has a lot of old vehicles. And so he needs some additional old vehicles for parts because it's hard to find the parts, um, which is why it has turned into multiple vehicles because one vehicle supplies parts for another vehicle. So again, you know, it's a discovery process, right? We get something brought to our attention. And then we go out and we speak with the property owners. We investigate, we learn a little bit more, we look at the codes and we try to apply them evenly and efficiently across the whole city. So um, that's that's all that happened. There no one was singled out. Um, it was just a particular issue that was brought to our attention and then we per treated just like any other issue, you know, just like any other person who says, hey, can my neighbor do um, a car wash business on their property? Is that allowed? Okay, let's look that up and see what they can do. So um, that's really how this happened.
Okay, and then in regard to the U G B expansion and the communication, um, I think we'll pick on Mr. Barner. And uh, apparently you were through the community, right?
No, I'm sorry. I can't take that hat off. Uh, you were supposed to, going to have a meeting tomorrow or? Whatever happened?
A meeting with some Facebook.
Okay. On Facebook or in person?
No, I prefer me. If people don't understand something, they have questions, I always tell them like, I'll meet with them in person, not doing it online.
Right. Yeah.
An individual will be shocked, me or hey, what would they be shocked? He uh, send you an email that had some taste itself in it. I said, well, let's have a conversation. We put it on Facebook. We're on the tomorrow.
Okay, now it just I heard this from the Chamber of Commerce and so no one was really sure. They thought it was two o'clock. It's not a public meeting. It's Thursday. We we've done almost twenty of those in my five years here. Yeah, yeah. And then as far as the U G B expansion and notification, uh, this was in the water bill. Or was it in the water bill? The information about the U G B expansion and meetings or not? Yeah, I I. I know it's on the website.
Our communication manager about that. I'm pretty sure we've done one Facebook post in the past four years about the river. I'll do some clarification. Share that with Commissioner Monte, the whole commission um, this week. But there are multiple meetings, Facebook, there's been several newsletter articles written throughout the years about that. Anyone that had signed up to be on mailing list with the PAC, I sent that too. That includes some residents, some agencies, a lot of the property owners that are in the study area. My understanding tomorrow is it's going to be several people that are not within the city, not within the subject property, they're outside of that. That's difficult for us to communicate.
Right.
That a lot of that just happened through the C P O eight for county. Those have been the ones since COVID. So um, communicating with some of those folks reaching them is going to be tough. But like I said, I'm willing to meet with them that going beyond, definitely would require their view. They don't think it's something that the local would be doing. And they're going to be expanded, but I'm willing to look at some questions about.
I had heard that that some people requested to be on a mailing list and couldn't get on it. So I don't, I don't know how factual that is, but I just, you know, so.
Well, if it's a mailing list, a hard copy mailing list, if we're retired to do I P L C D, will be on there.
Right.
If it's an emailing list, that's a repository of V C A. So anyone that ever requested beyond, including some folks in opposition at the last city council, I put them on the list because they have to be on there. But this has been going on for a couple of years. Anyone, whoever in the city, out of the city, whenever they have an email address, they'll get on there. That would be a and even newsletter articles and they got grabbed, raised one and four.
Okay, thank you. You can go back to being a citizen. What is this stuff, church building across the street there?
They were singled out. They're not going after the extra lot that the Christian church on Commercial and St. Edward's Lot that they're not using it as a as church property. They're not going after them.
Well, may I, you know, I'll be a non citizen here.
Well, wait a minute.
No, just so Stephen can pick one here. Um, as part of this process in investigating, I even reached out to you. Do we know when this was last used to recur?
Literally, right. I I mean, Lonnie used to have a process. It was literally right of COVID, they they quit operating because every church closed.
Okay, that's what we we asked your colleagues in A and T about that. We didn't say make sure they're not a church. That was asking questions if in of of everyone. So if you have to submit paperwork yearly, that that's all we're doing is partying. We had to do that uh, to the county for the uh, for the library. It's a nonprofit entity. So it's just a part of that diligence. You know, if we had another property that's active them and hasn't operated for years and years and years, it's part of our obligation when we, you know.
You're the only city doing that.
I I highly doubt that.
According to the exemption staff, it's the first time they've ever been contacted by a city to say a nonprofit is not in that building using it.
Okay.
So I just happen to know that this actually has been used.
Okay, well.
It doesn't matter. They lost their exemption status. They retroed it back twenty twenty two, even though the governor still had a COVID restriction till late of twenty twenty.
I think that's your colleagues. This is not something.
It happened because the city directly contacted them. That's what all the notes on the accounts say anyway.
What do they easily, do they?
I'm just saying it's bad face for the city to do something like that to a church.
Show me where we said make sure they're being passed.
All right, let's take that one out of the subject for now and.
I I continue that later.
What?
I got a question for you. Would you, uh, would the city look, I I don't understand why, but on North Avenue, three thirteen, there's no crosswalk? And that's a really, the kids are going to the park, thirty thirty. Handicap approaches on both sides, but there is no crosswalk for the kids to go across north. Or before the one. I just thought to look at.
Glad I showed up.
Wait, before you answer that, also, there's only two uh, to our new stop signs on Commercial and Main.
Yeah, you don't need that. When there when there's stop signs, they don't use.
How do I know where to go?
You're in a hole. However, though, when we do put on sidewalks and drinking stream, that um, intersection is going to get some approvals and they'll put very hard and restrict it anyway. But to that question, uh, Christian House wasn't required. Uh, I already know we did that. However, we did assessing that and um, those pedestrian buttons that were removed from Commercial Street and we put in the uh, stop signs. We're probably going to move there to uh, three thirty.
Well, I can show you with the park, so.
Yeah, I I get that. Yeah, that's something we've been monitoring.
What else got a bitch?
Oh, I do.
Well, yeah.
On three thirteen and Lennox, that intersection, there's a house and and a year ago, you couldn't hear so can't play yet. But um, they put an asphalt sidewalk. And if you walk down there, you're tripping now because it's settling where the water heaters are. And on the Lennox side, the tree roots are breeds at about ten inches. And I'm, I'm, it's a wonderful that the homeowner has put a sign, basically do not use the sidewalks. On his step. So I'm just wondering. It's a, it it was a city approved sidewalk and it's asphalt that it's just horrendous.
Is it on three eleventh or Lennox?
Three thirteen.
Or three thirteen? Three thirteen?
Is it?
Yeah, they had a Lennox side at the first.
Is it on both sides or just on the west side?
It would be just on the west side.
Well, that's the Reed's that division that was approved in the late nineties and Donna Reed was on the planning admission at the time. And that was what the city said was approved.
Yeah, there's there's alcohol sidewalks elsewhere in the city.
This is like the same thing on North Avenue that.
I was just wondering if, I mean, they should close it or somebody's going to get hurt.
Oh, it is the responsibility of the property owner to keep it safe.
Yeah, I'll I'll bring that up to the Republic Works Director just so we can go look at it tomorrow. I'm I'm not familiar with what you're talking about, but at least have them take a look at it and see if there's something they could do. But uh, thank you for raising that.
For some reason, I'm thinking there's that fault on both sides of this.
There is. Well, but it's the west side, it's the west side.
The west side, okay. It's right at the intersection.
No, it's the whole stretch of it.
But I mean, the problem there is at the intersection, yeah.
Well, the west side, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's all.
All right, any other? Hearing none? Does there's any staff comments?
Um, yeah, sorry for the confusion there with um, some of the concerns that Commissioner Lavanti had. Um, you know, I understand your concerns. You know, I think um, things happen for a reason. Whether they're right or wrong, you know, we learn from them, right? And so uh, maybe this is a longer process as well. Um, but other than that, um, I really don't have any comments.
Okay, any questions to staff? Since you're still here, you got anything? Come on. Uh, so our next regular meeting is going to be July twelve, assumably having a workshop at six, but that will be confirmed.
Yes, we'll do that. We'll be here at six. Um, and.
Without it, right?
Pardon?
With or without it?
With or without you, I will be here.
Okay, no other commission business to adjourn eight twenty seven.